Hey, parents. Before we start today's episode, I have exciting news. We're hosting a podcast pop-up where you can interact with the resources and guests featured here in real life. It's the second annual Podcast Apalooza, and it's free to attend. There will be a live animal presentation by Animal Tales and food trucks like Bam Snowballs, Kip's Hot Dogs, and Melt Pensacola. Plus, one lucky guest will win a $250 Amazon gift card, so mark your calendar for Saturday, February 1st, 2025, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Booker T. Washington High School. We'll see you there.
You're not going to please everybody. And you have to be able to know that if you win or you lose, you are still the passionate servant person that you wanted to be. Because when you run for office, you're a public servant. You are not there, well, you shouldn't be there for power. You should be there because you want to serve the public in some capacity.
Welcome to the Voices United in Education podcast. Each week, we showcase the teachers, administrators, and community members who go the extra mile to contribute to the success of every student in Escambia County. You'll meet the real people behind the titles and learn about the amazing resources to support every student's success. We all hear about the school board, but do we know what they really do? And what it takes to be a school board member? And what motivates someone to run for school board? My next guest has a master's in education, has been a teacher in a variety of capacities, and notably, an Escambia County school board member for 20 years, the longest-running school board member to date. Today, she's going to share the behind-the-scenes of what it's like to run for and serve on the school board, and what two decades has gifted her by way of perspective and hope for the future. Heart of service, voice of reason, school board pro, Patty Hightower. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much for asking.
So you were a school teacher and also taught college courses, but what planted the seed for you to branch out and run for school board?
Well, I think it was just kind of an inevitable next step. As I was involved with PTA here in Florida, and I ran and became the president of the Florida PTA.
Which is a big deal. I mean, for the whole state.
Yeah, it's the whole state.
Like, that's a humble brag. You know, like, yeah, you know, for the whole state.
Well, you know, I had a hard, I have a hard time helping our PTA members understand that they aren't just PTA members. Because PTA is the largest volunteer advocacy group in the United States.
Really?
Yes. And PTA was responsible for student lunches being put into the schools, child labor laws. I mean, there's just so much history. We've, we're over 100 and some odd years. And in fact, the Escambia County PTAs will be holding their 100th anniversary in January of 100 years of Escambia County Council PTAs.
Wow.
So, and we've got amazing help through our parents that become members of our PTAs. Some of our schools really rely so much on them for their help with volunteers, mentors, helping out in the cafeteria when the first day of school happens and all the kindergartners can't open their milk, or get their potato chips open, or whatever they're having for lunch. If you ever want to see what's really a true dedicated teacher, show up on the first day of school in a kindergarten cafeteria. The poor teachers barely get to sit down and eat. They're, they're usually wandering around with food in their hands, helping the next child navigate their, their own lunch.
And so this was the gateway drug.
It was. You know, I taught in, so when my child, my first child started school, was when I fully, really understood the angst that a parent could have handing off their most prized possession to people that they don't know. You know, so it is really an amazing thing to kind of a ha-ha moment. Yeah. So you get involved in PTA because then you can have access to the school, and you get to meet people, and you get to meet them. You know, you volunteer in the classroom, you get to see the kids, and you get, so, you know. And then I moved on to the county level. And then when I moved to the state level, I wasn't president first, I was secretary and other things. But it was really when I truly understood that there are a lot of kids out there that don't have a voice, and they don't have anybody that has a voice for them. And that's what the PTAs do. They help empower the parents to have a voice, you know, because they're their most important advocate for their own child. And so that's kind of where I was. And so when I finished that, I had two years as the immediate past president, and it was time for an election here in Escambia County. And I, I had had some people mention kind of running to me off and on over the years. And I can't remember exactly what happened that made me want to do it, except that we had kind of a dysfunctional school board at that time. No offense to any of them, but there was an adversarial tension between the superintendent and the school board. And so I thought, and also, my church did a Bible study on the Purpose Driven Life. And so we had just finished that book, and I thought, okay. Everybody always tells me, education is my purpose. Everybody that knows me says, well, of course, education's what you do. So I talked to my husband and my family first, of course. And that's what you have to do if you're going to run for office. Because it's not just you running for office. Everybody that's related to you in the town is part of that process. And then, and my husband is a kind of a political guru, kind of, he has a political science background. And, and so, you know, he, he was kind of, in fact, Well, in fact, he's responsible for my first truly elected position. When I was at the University of Alabama, roll tide, this weekend especially. But when I was there, there were student government elections. And he convinced me to run for the House of Representatives representing the dorms. And so that was my first truly elected position, where I had people that I didn't really know that were voting for me. But anyway, so I pulled a group of people together, and that knew me, and I kind of said, I'm thinking about this. What do y'all think? You know, and I think that's a very important step, too, is you've got to find out from those that, that know you and like you and love you anyway, no matter of the warts you have, and will be very open with you and tell you the truth, you know. So I had a wonderful group of people, most of them PTA people. And so we started this process, and I started like a year and a half before the actual election.
Is that typical?
Most people, if you're running against an incumbent, you want to do it as early as possible. If you're not, it's, you can start later. You know, the really hard starts after the, the primary, not the primary, the, the qualification period is when they really start. It's like three months. And I don't know who in Florida's past thought it was great to run for office in the heat of the summer in Florida, but.
We need to have a talk with them.
Yes. Because usually, your qualifying is in May, and your primary is in August. So, you know, you really get to work in that period of time. So when you're, when you're contemplating this, one of those things that you and I talked about earlier, is you have to have a real good sense of self. Because when you're, when you're running for office, there's a lot of people out there who may not embrace you.
That feels like it was delicately worded.
And so, you know, you have to realize that, in fact, I have a cartoon on my desk upstairs at the board office, that says, you know, on a good day, you will always have somebody who doesn't like you. And so I think when you run for office, you have to understand that, that you're not going to please everybody. And you have to be able to know that if you win or you lose, you are still the passionate servant person that you wanted to be. Because when you run for office, you're a public servant. You are not there, well, you shouldn't be there for power. You should be there because you want to serve the public in some capacity. And so it's really hard sometimes, if you don't win, I haven't had that experience, but, but I understand that it can be devastating. And so, you know, I got busy when we started this. I put together a team. I started reading every book I could find on how do you run an election. I have four books that I read.
Wow.
And, and some things that, that if you, if, if any of your listeners are thinking about running for office, any office, some of the things you want to start doing is creating some networking opportunities, you know, joining civic groups, being a PTA member, whatever those kind of things are that, that fill your passion, you know, be sure that you're getting out there and people are getting to know who you are as an individual.
Are you supposed to, or is it typical to run on a certain platform, like, like, this is the change that I will make, and that's kind of the platform that you run on? Is that normal?
That is normal.
What was yours?
Mine was bringing civility back.
Ooh, I like that. I'm sad you're going away. That's such a great, great platform.
At that particular time, we had a lot of opportunities, the school board at that time would show up, when people read the newspaper, above the fold, with things that were not setting forth, in my opinion, the best role models for our students in our schools. It was, so I felt like, you know, we needed to do something to bring back civility. People could disagree without being disagreeable. And so, of course, there were other things, you know, because we had, we were oversight, we had too many schools and too few students. And there was a lot of things that were out there that we were talking about. But I remember one of the forums, I had three other opponents, and one of the forums asked, you know, why don't good people run for office? And I happened to get that last. And I said, well, they do. I'm running.
Nice. That was how you announced it?
No, that was just at a public forum.
Oh, wow. That's still such a wonderful mic drop scenario. Yeah. That's amazing. When you were, during your time, how many women were on the board?
There were two sitting members at that time.
Including yourself?
No. When I came on, we also brought on District Five board member, and that person had been a female, and it changed to male. So at the time I came on, there would be two.
And now that you're retiring?
Depending on who wins the District Four race in November, could be one or none.
Wow. Wow. We need to get some more ladies on there, I think.
Well, you know, I, you know, it's hard, and I hate to say this, but, but, you know, women have a harder time making up their mind to do this. Because as I've talked about, your family is very much involved. If you're a mom with young children in particular, and unfortunately, in today's world, there are people that are not, not cautious about what they say. And, you know, they can, they, kids can hear it in, you know, people talking, they can see it on TV. And so you want to be careful with that. My son had just left high school, so it, it wasn't as hard on him. He was out of town. But, but that is one of the things any male or female looks at, you know, how does this affect my family? Especially if, if there is some contentious things going on, on the, on the board itself. And in today's world, if we, if, I know we're going to talk about the 20 years, but that is what, to me, is so different today, is that when I first got on the board, yes, there were some disagreements, but it seems like it's more vitriol, vitriolic. And it's not, I don't think it's necessary, but it does seem like we have gotten to where, you know, if you disagree with me, you're obviously wrong. And I don't remember that being that bad before.
So why would that environment affect women more than men? Because if, certainly, some of the men on the board have small children, why is it, in your opinion, affecting them less?
You know, that's, I've often thought about that. I was trying to figure that out. But I do know that as, when I first got on 20 years ago, women were not quite at the place they are today.
Right.
And so I think we have more women that are available, that they, they have husbands that support them and would be able to help them with the, with the children process. You know, we know that childcare is expensive. We know all of these things. And so, and I know when I sit in church and I look out over the congregation, and I look at all the young families, most of our young families today, mom and dad both work. You know, we, we don't have a lot of moms that stay at home anymore. And I think that, you're probably right. I don't think today it would really make a difference, because I think that everybody looks at how that would affect the home structure, and how it would affect their children.
Well, you would hope so. But I mean, a lot of gender studies do show that despite being double workers, the women usually take the cognitive and emotional labor of the home along with the child rearing. So I could see from that vantage point why they might be hesitant to also run. But hopefully, things will be changing, and there'll be, you know, there'll be success stories that you'll be reading about soon. Because you're right, 20 years is a long time. When I think about like, okay, 20 years ago, you know how you kind of imagine? Okay, Britney Spears was still with Kevin Federline. That was 20 years ago.
Well, see, I remember it because 20 years ago, in September, Ivan hit. It was right after my primary election.
Yeah.
And I was so grateful to have been elected in the primary, because it would have been very difficult to do any campaigning from the, from after Ivan until the, the election in November.
Wow. Yeah.
So that kind of frames my whole thing about where I am and how long ago that was.
It absolutely does. What, what things have, what successes have you seen since beginning 20 years ago?
Well, I think that we have done a really good job of math, of financial security. Hard things have happened. You know, when I was talking about, we had more buildings than students. And so there were things that had to be done to right-size our district with the number of students. Because the state would not let you build a new school if you had capacity anywhere in your district. Well, as is still happening today, a lot of the, the growth was north and, and west. And so that was where our students were, but our capacity was here in the, in the south end of the state, in the county. And so, you know, we had to start doing that. And then we were very fortunate that we got the citizens to approve the half-cent sales tax, so then we could build some additional schools. If we did not have that, we would not have been able to, because the state quit giving money to the public school districts to, to, to provide us with funds to build and to do renovations. And so that was an excellent, excellent, we've built seven schools in the 20 years I've been here, I think. I may, I may be miscounting. I haven't sat down and counted them up. We have gone from, just speaking as a school board member, we used to have our agenda in a notebook that was like a five-inch notebook that we carried around, all the stuff. We now have it all online. Our students, some, they still had black boards, and then it went to white boards. And now everybody has a computer. Some of that can be good. Some of that, we're still thinking about. But, you know, our teachers have had to, to grow with that, too. Education, the delivery of education has, has really changed in that the teacher's still the best part of the school day, but they're having to keep up with all the changes as well, and all the different resources that are out there. And so, you know, those are some of the things that happened, that are just kind of mind-boggling, when I think it's only been 20 years.
I know. It is.
It's only been 20 years.
It's, you're so, you're so right. Yeah. The amount of adaptability required from then to now, we didn't know that we would need it, but here we are. And the amount of adaptability and flexibility that we'll need in the next 20 years?
Well, and, and to that point as well, you know, we have totally continually had career academies. So we are offering kids the opportunities to get some real job skills. Well, in that 20 years, the difference in the, the type of jobs that are out there in, you know, the 20th century job skills, we're now in the 21st century. And so I sometimes ask, when I go to presentations, and say, what are the 21st jobs? I mean, it's still communication. It's still creativity. It is still being able to create solutions. And so that's what our teachers are doing. You know, they're trying to help our kids be adaptable, because we don't know what's going to be out there in 20 years. So you've got to have that ability to work as a team. You've got to have that ability to solve problems. You've got to have that ability to communicate. And that's, those are the three most important things that are going on in our classrooms.
So how does the school board help teachers and families do that?
Well, what we're, school board members are tasked kind of differently. There are two lanes. The superintendent runs the day-to-day operations of the schools. School board members work on policy and funding. And so the main way we help is by listening to the superintendent and his staff talk about the needs of this, each school, so that they can make the best possible educational opportunities for the students in their school. And we fund those things. And then we help create the policies that are always changing every time the legislature goes to Tallahassee.
Okay. So in your time, how has being a military spouse, because your husband is an Army, or was an Army JAG, yes?
Yes.
How has that perspective shaped your, your time as a school board member? Because I feel, coming from a military community outside, I'm from Offutt Air Base in Nebraska in Bellevue, I feel like military families are just reinforced differently, right? And they operate differently. And military kids are, I just think they're the coolest. They just have a specific set of skills.
They do.
And certainly, you did, too. Can you explain what that, what that brought to the table?
Well, I think, I also grew up in Mobile when Brookly Air Force Base was there. So I actually had a lot of friends that were military as well. But I think that that was one of the things that pushed me to help, keep helping the district understand that we had students coming in that were coming from different areas. That was, you know, so I remember one of my friends saying, well, my son, my son was like a brilliant math student when we were in Texas. And then he gets here, and you're in a totally different place, you know. And so being aware of that. And then we've also put together our joint military council that helps really the district and the NAS talk about, what are the things that we're needing to do? We've gotten so many DoD grants now. And, and it's just, you know, making us aware of the fact that this is a rich resource for us, not just because we can be getting the Department of Defense grants, but because they have world, worldly influence. They know things that have happened. And then to be able to help them through things when mom or dad are deployed. And we have several schools that have, have military liaisons that are there to help the families with the transition. Because every state does things just a little differently. Their, their grading systems could be just a little different. And, and as, that was one thing I liked about Common Core, was I, I saw it from, from a military standpoint, that, you know, in, in California, in the third grade, they're learning their, the multiplication tables. In Florida, if they get here in the third grade, they're still be learning their multiplication tables. And so I think that we're very aware of the fact that we have, we have to be very sensitive to those changes as students come in and try to, to adjust to that. And we're very help, very grateful to have help from the Naval Air Station with helping our people make those adjustments.
Our military families are such assets to our community in general, regardless of if they're children or adults. I'm just so grateful. I get so excited if a military couple moves into our neighborhood. And, you know, I'm probably a little extra when I go up to them and say, I'm so glad you're here. I remember saying that once, and he said, you are? And I said, absolutely. I, I just have such an appreciation for what they bring to the table. And I think they're important, important ingredient. And, and for not just what has happened and what is, but, but for that next 20 years that we were talking about.
That's right.
What do you see as a, a challenge on the horizon in that next 20 years for the school board?
Well, it's a continuing challenge. And since I have been on the board, I've, I've been very much aware of the fact that we have got to be competitive.
Competitive to whom?
To private schools now. Before, actually, when I was president-elect of the Florida PTA, I was the chair of the anti-voucher movement for the state. But, so Governor Bush and I had many conversations about that. And, and, you know, I understood what they were saying in that we need to provide a great product. And, and if we weren't, and this, I would say this to, I said it to at least four, four superintendents now, you know, if we're not the choice of the parents, why, we need to be asking, why aren't we the choice of the parents? And sometimes it's something as simple as schedule, you know, and that may not be something we can really address. But, you know, it, we do have to compete. We know we've got the best teachers. We know we have the best programs. Our career academies, I mean, they're amazing. I know you've had many people come on and talk about them. You know, and we're very grateful that all these superintendents have given us opportunities for our students to come to our Thursday workshops. They'll come and do, each academy has come to do a presentation. And the last time, it was on the Communications Academy and Telecommunications Academy. And we had a young man who graduated less than two years ago, who's working, and he, he put a lot of the communications stuff in that new ship, the McCool, Richard McCool. And, I mean, he's making six figures.
I know. It's amazing. I love featuring the academies. I'm so glad that we have them.
And it, and, you know, that is one of those things that, you know, outside groups can't compete. But we, we in education are so, we talk amongst ourselves so much. And that's what I love about these podcasts, because we tend to talk to each other. We talk about how great we are, you know, to each other. But what we haven't been successful at doing is telling those people that don't have kids in school anymore, or never had kids in our schools. You know, what, what, you know, every year at this time, tax time, they're going, so why should I be paying taxes? I don't have a kid in your school. Yeah, but you've got somebody that's going to have to be taking care of you. You've got doctors. All of these kids are being educated today in our public schools, and they're going to take care of you, whether you paid your taxes in here or not. And if we don't provide the most up-to-date, most relevant education, we won't have those people around to take care of us in our old age.
What do you feel like, overall, at this moment, people misunderstand the most about the school board?
The, the school board itself, I think my primary job, and I, you know, one thing that most people don't understand is, one school board member by his or herself has no power. You know, because we are a board, and you vote by majority. And so sometimes they forget that just one person can't make something happen. But I think that, that my primary role is helping the citizen navigate the system that is education. It's a very complicated system in, in trying to figure out, okay, if I want student records, where do I go? Who do I talk to? Do I go to the school? Do I go to, you know? And it depends on how many years have passed. It's, you know, so I always think that our school board members are those people that, that are the closest to, to the voter, the ones who can answer those questions. Because the superintendent's got a lot of things to, that he, I can say he, that's what we have, he takes care of. And so instead of them calling 15 different people, they could call a school board member, and I say, oh, you need to call so-and-so, you know, and you need, this is where you need to go.
So you feel like they're closer to the voter than the PTA people?
Well, the PTA people who I talk to, so.
Well, that's what was, that was my next question, is like, so a parent listening to this, they have important insight, advice, perspective requests, that they want to make sure that, get the ear of a board member, at least, or the board members. What's the process for them to do that?
I would suggest, and, and this is what I'm going to do a presentation next week, as a matter of fact, remember that all five board members, you can talk to all five. In Escambia County, we do have district elections. I was elected by the good citizens of District Four. But by statute, I represent the entire county. And so in the best circumstances, a board member looks at whatever's being proposed and evaluates it, not just basically on what their particular district needs or wants, but how it will impact the entire county. So, you know, that's one thing that I think some people don't understand. They'll call Patty Hightower and say, blah, 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 blah. And, and I'll, I'll say, well, you know, I, you can't, you can't tell them that you talked to me. But I would advise you to call the other board members and share with them this, this issue. Or you can come to the public forum, and you can talk about an idea that you have. Let your board member know that you'd like to serve on some of the district committees. That's kind of how I got involved, too, because I, I sometimes was the parent representative on many of the district committees while I was with PTA. And, and, you know, email, phone calls. I mean, that's how you get to know what's going on. But it's how we get to hear what are our concerns. At the beginning of the year, we always get calls on bus routes, and we always get calls on, on the number of students in a classroom. And, and what we do is then share with the appropriate person, whether it be the superintendent or one of the directors, you know, we're getting calls about this. You know, can you help me figure out how I can help you with the communication?
Interesting. That paints a really clear picture, actually, of like, how a, a normal mom or dad can kind of have their voice heard. So I'm really glad that you described that. And before we wrap, I, I want to give you the chance to talk to people who are thinking about running for a school board. What advice would you give someone who is kind of rolling that around in their mind?
Do it.
Tell us how you feel, Patty.
Well, I, I mean, I want to say that when I was reading the books, the first time I ran, Gerald Ford and Jimmy Carter's first elected positions were school board members. And so, you know, it's, it is, sometimes And so, you know, it's, it is, sometimes people see it as a stepping stone, but it's really and truly one of the most important jobs. You really get to know what's happening, because it's a small group. I mean, you're, I, when I was running the first time for the district and I was thinking about the presidential election and how hard it was for me to just get around and knock on doors in District Four, I could not imagine what it must be like to run for a national office or a state office or, you know, because it's that much worse. But, but it's really, you know, the knocking on the doors and meeting people and hearing what they have to say and hearing their comments. And then being able to share with them what you know about the district. And, you know, there's always room for improvement. But we need people with good ideas and people who will keep children as the top priority. No matter what, whatever is coming in front of the board, if we can always remember the child is at the center of whatever our decision-making is. And so as a school, a person that's looking at it, you know, I always tell people, call me. I'll take you to lunch, I'll take you to have a cup of coffee, whatever, we can talk it out. But it's really, it's a good way to get started. See if this is what your passion is. Maybe, maybe you move on to a House Representative seat or to the presidency. But it's a way to get started. And it's really meaningful, because I truly believe that school board members are servant leaders, because they really are close to the voters that elected them. Or I've never met anybody who didn't elect me, actually.
But, but Does, I have a follow-up question about that. So, because you said that when we were talking in our pre-chat, does that mean that when you become elected to, as a school board member, that you kind of enter into a silo of opinion and you don't ever meet anyone that didn't vote for you because they're not speaking to you?
No, no, it means that everybody that calls you will remind you that they voted for you.
Roger that. Okay, one more follow-up upon the advice for prospective board members. What would you say to a person that is thinking, gosh, I'd love to make a difference in the lives of children? I'd love to take what I know about Escanbut County and transfer that in an actionable way, but I already have a job.
Well, you know, surprisingly, school board is a part-time job.
And it sounds not like a part-time job.
Well, you know, you can put into it or not. But, I mean, really and truly, the most, you go to one meeting a month, it's required. And then we have workshops here and there and maybe some special meetings. But it's, and the board has been very kind about, you know, looking at other people's schedules. I know a lot of times people that have jobs think, oh, I can't do that. But I will tell them that they can if they want to. I mean, any busy person, you know this, can find time for those things that they believe in and that they're passionate about. They'll find some time in their schedule. We do it all the time, you know. If you need something else done, ask the busy person. Eighty percent of the work is done by 20% of the people.
That's so true, so true. And you are certainly passionate about this. So my final question is what's next for you? Because you strike me as a woman who doesn't sit on her laurels.
Well, I haven't really made lots of plans. I have two grandchildren in Lexington, Kentucky. I hope to be able to go and see more of their activities than I have been able to do. I have a lot of applications at my church, but I'm just going to take this one day at a time. And, you know, if something pops up that I'm passionate about, I'm kind of getting back involved with the PTA here locally. And so I know I'm not going to sit at home and eat bonbons, but I don't know exactly what it is I am going to do.
Well, I appreciate you spending part of your day today here with me. And I know the listener is due to. This has been fantastic.
Thank you very much, and I hope that people gain something.
They would have to be completely unplugged, unengaged, to not get anything out of this discussion. Your passion is contagious and thank you so much for your 20 years.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening. Be sure to subscribe and share. Voices United in Education is a production of Escanbut County Public Schools.